All right, we are. It is seven o'clock. We will call to order this meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, may we have a roll call, please?
Carrie Ellis.
Here.
Justin Thomas. Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Scott Ha.
Here.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
Here.
With six members in attendance, we have a quorum this evening. The mission statement of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. Any changes, additions, or subtractions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
With no members in the public, we will pass on that, and we are quickly on to board monitoring, and welcome to the ladies from Baird this evening. Yes.
Turning on 101. How's that? Better, or do you need me to get very close? No, like, this is okay? Okay. We don't have any, we don't have any audience. Hi, audience. Okay. Again, I'm Lisa Voison from Baird. I was here probably three or six months ago talking about your debt, and we did a little bit of refinancing with the bank and saved some money for the district. And as part of our services, another kind of branch of Baird Public Finance is our School Business Solutions Team, who helps us build the Baird Budget Forecast Model, and that's what you have in front of you. I see you're all looking at it. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Elise, and Elise is going to walk through just the Snapchat of your model and what assumptions are in it, and then I'll come back and kind of talk about what my observations are, and we'll go into talking about, a little bit about recurring, non-recurring, and some of those facts and figures and things like, and tax impacts. So I'll turn it over to Elise right now.
Hi, guys. My name's Elise Smern. Like Lisa said, member of the School Business Solutions Team, so my area of expertise is the model. So while I'm new to the, to the school board circuit, what you're looking at is really my bread and butter. So we're just gonna talk kind of big picture globally. So the numbers that you see in front of you, they will absolutely change. They're just to kind of inform what we're looking at moving forward. So just a little background on how the model works. What we do is we take your school, Palmyra's historical financial data, we plug it into our model, we make tweaks based on the current year, so anything from salaries to utilities, and then those kind of help shape and inform those projected years that you're looking at. So it helps us really provide guidance as we're looking at not just the upcoming year, but, you know, the next three, the next five. So some of the assumptions that we're looking at here, I'll talk through, scroll so that we're all looking at the same thing. I'm just gonna talk about some of the key factors that will really dictate the next couple of years. And the first one that we'll start taking a look at is the enrollment. So as you may notice, in the upcoming years, we're looking at just very slight declining enrollment, which will affect the revenue that you'll be getting from the state. Equalized valuation growth, we plugged in a zero percent to be conservative. Revenues and expenditures, looking pretty flat moving forward, but then as you see, you get to that fiscal year 2020, and we're taking a little bit of a dip. Similarly, with fund balance, to cover that deficit, we would be pulling from fund balance, and so that's why you'll see in those, as we get farther out, you know, the fund balance begins to diminish. And then lastly, is kind of that, that tax rate, which I know that everybody's very sensitive to and wants to keep an eye on. So as I mentioned, these numbers will change, and the reason for that is multifold. So on the one hand, right, where there are a lot of state variables that are still kind of unknown, right, so that third Friday in September count, that's really gonna finalize that enrollment growth or decline. Similarly, your aid, and lastly, any other state assumptions that we're not currently aware of. So the model shows what's currently in the biennial budget, but anything that changes, you know, for example, the low revenue ceiling this past year, that was a change that we didn't anticipate. So that's just another kind of thing to keep in mind. So while it's not, like I said, the exact answer, it helps to inform future decision-making, which is why we're here, which is good, so that you can say, hey, we knew this was coming and we're prepared, and so we had strategies in place to kind of mitigate that. So speaking of strategies or techniques that we can use to kind of mitigate that, that's where Lisa will kind of cover some of the things that we'll look to, to help keep Palmyra successful.
I'm gonna tell you what equalized valuation growth is.
I still have.
So, equalized valuation is your, is the total property value in the school district. It's how we calculate your taxes. It's how we, we use that to calculate your mill rate, okay?
So the 4.89% for this year is because...
You increase property value. New businesses moved in, which would be great.
Not new home starts.
It could be new home starts, it could be just add, you know, economically, the value of property is going up, right? We all know that. People are offering more than asking price for the, for housing, and it's just a different world right now. So we did say if, we did want, we did keep it flat, but that's a scenario we may wanna run in the future, because it's conservative in the, in the, in the mill rate. It'll give you a higher mill rate, and I'll explain mill rate in a second, if you have it flat, but it will be, it'll be more aggressive for state aid, because it appears you're more property poor. You don't have a lot of growth. So you get less state aid. I'm sorry, more state aid, sorry, and less taxes. So I always say with the property value growth, you gotta be real. So, and again, this is a scenario we can run in the future.
But if you rolled back six or seven years, you wish it'd be negative?
You did, in '08, in '09, and '10, and '11, it was negative. Before that, it was double digits. So I always like to look back the last couple of years and just be real. What's happening in your economy in this district? Your, look at the housing, look at the, you know, growth. Do you see foreclosures? Do you see businesses moving out? Maybe not. Do you see growth? Do you see cranes and building? Maybe. So, so that's, that's equalized value. But that drives that bottom number. So the bottom number on there is your mill rate, and that's what you, as school board members, really care about, because it calculates taxes. And the easy way to calculate taxes with a mill rate is just move the decimal over two. So your mill rate was $10.90 for last fall. If you move the decimal over two, on a $100,000 property, the taxes for school is estimated at about $1,090. So $100,000 property, just move the decimal over two, and those are your school taxes. Now, you've got village, you've got county, you've got tech college and all that. But just the school tax would be $1,090. Double that if you have a $200,000 property. Because as we move into the possibility of referendum and, and, and asking for more funds, the first thing, your neighbors are gonna corner you in the grocery store and ask you, what is that gonna do to my taxes? And you can say, well, if you have a $100,000 property, you pay $1,090 for the year. And the increase, if we, we were just doing the math earlier, half a million dollar increase, so say you had, we wanted additional revenue to come in for $500,000, that's about 63 cents on the mill rate. So what is that on a $100,000 home? It's a quiz. $63 on a $100,000 home. So you can tell your neighbors if, you know, and again, I shouldn't probably put that out there, because we gotta do a lot of math and a lot of calculations, but as an example, when we start talking about mill rates, know that if you just move it over two, you've got, you can do the math for that, the annual, the annual impact. So I'll just say one more thing about this forecast, and then we can kind of talk about how we're gonna fix it. The first thing I look at, when I look at this forecast, is that surplus deficit. Is your budget balanced? Do your revenues equal your expenses? Yes, they do in 2018, the current year, right? We budgeted for a balanced budget. I'm assuming we're heading in that direction by June 30th. We'll be balanced. I'm looking at Sharon. Yeah, she's nodding. Your projected budget for 2019, I'm assuming is gonna be balanced. So that's a good sign. That means you're not, you know, a lot of districts I'll look at are, are right in the red in year one. You're not. You guys are balanced next year. So really, we need to start thinking about the following year, 1920. Because your revenues are under expenses by 730,000, and I'm, again, lots of estimates go into this. Don't zero in on that number, because that's gonna change. But the idea is that there, you know, you need to start planning for a potential negative in that year. Now, we have the fund balance, which is the line below that. It says fund balance. The way the model works is the fund balance covers that. So you can see it drops, the fund balance drops by 730,000 year over year. Well, you can only do that for so many years, and now you're in negative fund balance. You definitely don't wanna be in that situation. I worked with a district a couple of years back that were, that was a negative fund balance in the first year. I mean, they, they were in dire need of asking for more money, or they were gonna close their doors. You're not in that, you're not in that boat. So that's the good news. Yep, so you have 22%, which is how much fund balance you have as a percent of expenditures. That's what you have, which is, that's another thing I'll hone in on, too, when I look at these models, is where is your fund balance? And you're in a great place. So good job, well managed. That's a sign of a well-managed district, when you have a fund balance that, that's strong. Because I know there were years in this district where it wasn't the case, years back, many years ago. Okay, so that's, so every time we run a scenario with a model, this is what you'll see. You'll see these key assumptions or key factors. And again, I would hone in on that surplus deficit line. I'd look at maintaining that fund balance, and then I'd look to the bottom to say, what does that tax levy look, look like, the mill rate? Okay? Okay, so, so the question is, how do we resolve this issue? What do school districts in the state of Wisconsin do to say, okay, in two years, we're gonna be negative something, and we need to, we need to resolve that? Really, your option is to, the only option you have is to increase your revenues, right? And how do you do that this significantly? You have to go to the voters for a referendum. There's really no other way unless you had a huge increase in enrollment, or, you know, a grant or donation, or something of that sort, that, a large increase in revenue, really the only way to do it. So you have all kinds of options when it comes to going to referendum. You guys have done this, I think, what do we say, six times? And five out of the six times, you, you were unsuccessful. So we wanna plan for this and have good communication. Yeah, we had six operational referendums. I, I don't have that data in, in your packet, but I printed it out. I can get this data, too. Could be. Yep. So let's talk about that a little bit. There's two, two types of referendums. You can go for a non-recurring and recurring. Do you guys, are you familiar with what that means? I see a couple nods. Non-recurring has a sunset. Non-recurring ends. Some districts go for three years, some go for five. I've seen some go for 20. It really depends on the purpose and what you're using it for. So there's lots of reasons why you'd go to three, lots of four years, five years, so you can pick your term. The disadvantage to a non-recurring is that, once it goes away, you're back in that negative red, you know, you're back to zero. So you have to go to, back to referendum. I mean, I shouldn't say have to, but 99% of the districts go back. If they are a three-year non-recurring, they're back in year four, for another three year. You'll see a lot of districts will go three years, and three years, and three years, and continue that. And once you get into that loop, it works well, because the community knows you're coming back after three years. What I like about it is it allows you to regroup after three years. What's happening with the state budget? What's happening with our budget? Where is our enrollment? Where is our aid? So you can get three years down the road, and you can recalculate that forecast. And now, the number that you need might be different than what you asked for last time. So there's, there's advantages and disadvantages. You can go for a flat amount for three years, so 600,000 for three years, or you can go for an escalating amount. You can go, I've seen districts go for, you know, 730,000, 311 in year one, $1,055. You know, you can pick what you wanna go for, okay? So you can pick the amount, you can pick the term. But know if you go non-recurring, it's really good chance you're gonna have to go back after the sunset, okay? If you, and, and one other thing on non-recurring that I always talk about, and we can talk more about this later, but I always like to end in the middle of a biennial budget on the non-recurring, because then, when you, you're ready to go back for the next group, if it's three or four years, you already know year one, what your budget, the biennial budget's gonna be. So I always try to end in the middle. Okay, so recurring. Meskego, you know, I was on the school board in Meskego, Norway School District, and we've gone for several referendums. But one of our referendums we went for was to add on to the high school. I believe it was like back in 2002 is when we did it. And we went for two questions. So we went to add on the high school, but we also asked for a recurring referendum, because we needed to pay for the additions, additional janitor, or additional lighting, or additional heating, those, a recurring expense. I think that was the purpose of recurring, was we're adding a safety and security officer. I was just talking to a district today who's gonna do that. That's a recurring expense. Every year, you gotta pay the, you know. So that was the purpose, but a lot of districts use it to fund a deficit. Because in their mind, it's a permanent fix. Get that out of your mind, because typically, if you go for a recurring, at some point, you'll have to come back again. So recurring is not a permanent fix. So try to, but it's a longer fix, because it adds to your base, and you get that every single year. Eventually, just the way your revenues and expenditures, your expenses go up faster than your revenues, every district in the state does, eventually you'll have to come back again. But maybe it's, it's a little bit longer, and it's not cut and dry, it's not firm. You can, it's, it's just a little bit, it just gets you to a little bit further down the road. One other, a couple of things about the recurring. One, it's more challenging to pass, because people look at it as an open checkbook, or, you know, it's an ongoing number that you're, you're asking. You're increasing taxes every year. And one other, other thing is, and we were just talking about this in another district, and I can't think of where, but you can do what's called, what I call, a step recurring, which you say you need $600,000 every single year, but in year one, you only need $400,000. So in year one, you need, to balance, you need $400,000. But in year two, to balance, you know you're gonna need $600,000. Well, you could just ask for one question, recurring $600,000 every single year, and you'd end up with more in year one, right? Because you only need 400. Or you could step into it. So ask for 400 recurring in year one, an additional 200 recurring in year two, and then you'll have 600 thereafter. So there's all kinds of ways you can, because, and one of the reasons why you wanna do that is to mitigate your tax impact. You don't want that huge tax impact in year one. You wanna step into it. So that's an option as well. All, all great options, all things to think about. So let me give you a little bit more background information. So do, do you guys get the difference between recurring and non-recurring? Okay. So you're, this is my you're-not-alone slide, because this is slide, I guess, four. You're not alone. There's districts all over the state that are going to referendum for this exact purpose. In 2018 alone, we've already had seven recurring questions, and, and 26 non-recurring questions on the ballot at, in the state of Wisconsin. We have had record pass rates. The non-recurring passed at 88%, the recurring passed at 71. And you'll see that throughout, when I show you the trend or the historical data, you're gonna see that recurring is, is fewer and more challenging to pass. And it's for the reasons I, I said previously. So, oh, this is a fun green. It was gray, and I couldn't see it, so we picked a different color. So here is year over year. So this is a five-year history for state of Wisconsin. Again, background data for you, so you can kind of see, A, you're not alone. There are districts out there that go to referendum. And there's three types of referendums. So we have issue debt. That's for facilities. You've done that. ID is what it's called here on this slide. Recurring referendum, RR, and non-recurring, the NR. So in the green, those are all the past. You can see in 2014, we had 33 debt issues pass. We had a total of 51 debt issues. 15 for recurring, and 54 for non-recurring. So you can get an idea of the number of districts that go per year, and how many pass. Okay? Just statistics that a lot of times I get asked. Big question is, what, what happened in 2016? Why is there so many debt issues? The reason why that is, is because 20 years ago, the state implemented, I don't know if any of you were on the board then, but two-thirds funding. So there was state aid that kicked in 20 years ago. So there were so many districts in the state 20 years ago that went to referendum for, to issue debt, and all that debt dropped off. It's gone. So in 2016, we saw an inflow of, influx of districts asking for more to fill in that gap. So, not you, but that's the reason why that's 82. That's such a high number there in 2016. Questions on that, the trends? A little bit about the legislative update that just recently happened, and actually, I have one other thing that is not on here, but two referendum questions per year. So right now, in the calendar year of 2018, districts can only ask two questions. This really doesn't pertain to you guys, because if you go, it's gonna be likely just one question. You're not looking for any kind of facilities or anything like that. So it really doesn't pertain. What might pertain to you, and I don't know if they, do you know if they're affected by the low revenue increase?
They're not.
Okay. So in three years, you might be affected? Okay. So, okay. So just keep in mind that if you fail an operational referendum in 2018, it essentially freezes the low revenue increase. So what does that mean? It means if your revenue per pupil is, let's just say, $9,000, the state will allow you to adjust that automatically up to $9,400 per student. So it's, it's a good amount of increased revenue to fund the deficit. In your case, you're not that low. There's a lot of districts out there that are, you know, their revenue per student is $9,000. And with this new legislation, they can bump that up to 4, $9,400, and it gives them a lot more revenue. You're borderline, so you're, you haven't hit that low revenue yet, but if you would, and you failed the referendum, you won't be able to kick it out.
We're at 96.72. So in our third year, we would actually lose $28 if we couldn't jump to the high ceiling.
So $28 per student, which is, how much is that in revenue? 28 times?
800.
Okay. I can't, I'm in finance, but I can't do that math. But you get the idea. Okay, so again, they're being more restrictive on referendums. That's the gist of that. Referendum election dates. So let's just talk briefly about that. So the first thing I'm gonna look at is, when do you need funds? We know that you do not need to put any funds into your budget in 2018. We, we just saw that. You're gonna be balanced. You're gonna be okay for next year. So the first levy, if you had a successful referendum, would go into the 1920 levy. We don't have any fall election dates in odd years, so that 2019 column, there's nothing in the fall. So that backs us up to spring of 19. And Sharon and I talked about spring of 19, and you, you have two options, the primary and the general. The primary is in February, and the general is in April in 2019. If we wait till April, it, it's problematic from a budget standpoint in terms of determining your salaries and benefit costs.
Determining layoffs, all those things. The sooner we can do that, the better. We wait till April, and you really have to have two budgets created, because one, if it passes, and one, if it doesn't. And so it would be, at least give us two months more time if we could go with the February.
And that's not uncommon. February is not an uncommon date to go to referendum. Is it the statistically the best day? No. We've done the stats, and November is always the most, highest success rate day, but I'm not a fan of statistics. I don't know. I don't have those stats in, with me, but I'm not a fan of statistics, because it's, are you ready? Are your voters informed? Are they educated? Have you put out the information? Have you had a couple of public hearings? Have you talked to, you know, your community? If they're ready, they'll go get out and vote. So, but, you know, I've had districts that are adamant to go in November, because it's the best chance of passing. So we don't, but again, you know, February is not uncommon. I'll just say that. The deadline, here's what you need to know as a board. The deadline to decide is in December. So by the end of the year, you as a board really need to have your final decision made. Actually, the deadline is December 11th, where you have to adopt a resolution with the amount, the kind, recurring or non-recurring, and the purpose. So December is your deadline, which I like, because we have, all of our data will be out. All this, the pertinent data, we, you've got, your estimated valuation comes out in August. Your third Friday count comes out in September. Your equalized value, your final valuation, comes out in October. comes out in September, your equalized value, your final valuation comes out in October, your state aid comes out. So we'll have everything in place to make a great, informed decision on what we want to go to referendum for, like what that dollar amount is. I don't want to talk about dollar amounts, we talked about this earlier, right now, because there's so many factors that are coming out between September and October and August that we want to let those come out. Let's fine tune, refine, and look at your budget, you know, at that point, and then decide on amounts. And then that gives you from December to February to get the information out. That really, that's your informational campaign time. Once you adapt, to, to referendum days, when you'll likely put out informational pieces, possibly even have a public meeting, information night, or, we'll, we'll talk about that later. But timing, timing is important. That's why I think it's good we're talking about it and thinking about this now. So what else? What are there, any other questions on timing? Any other questions?
Most of you have seen parts of the budget forecast model I brought to you last month. This simply was a snapshot, page two here is just a snapshot of that same program that I showed you. It does need, like Lisa said, lots and lots of tweaking. And, and like I've told you over and over, the budget changes every day. And so I agree with Lisa 100% that we can't pick a dollar amount and start getting that information out there in case it's wrong. You know, we need to make sure of our numbers before we can start actually getting a dollar amount out there. But the fact that we need to do it probably is very obvious to all of you. Is two months long enough? Like the December to February to?
For the information campaign? This type of referendum, I would say yes, because it's, it's relatively, first of all, you've done it before, so people are familiar with it. Yeah, I know. You've done it before, and, I mean, I think it's doable. It'll be intense, but I think it's doable. It's not like you're trying to build a new elementary school, or you're doing a major facility, then I would say no. And we can be ready to hit the ground running, because we're gonna have all our answers by the end of October. We could even do, you know, put informational pieces out in November. And of course, if you continue to talk about it at your school board meetings.
I don't know exactly what day of the week, December 11th is, but I would assume we would have to adopt in November anyways.
Okay.
Given it's the second Tuesday.
Yep.
So we could actually start then, correct?
And you can start earlier, I just, I'm not a fan if you're gonna change, if you think something's gonna change between the time you have information out there and you finalize.
Basic education.
Yeah.
A long way.
Yeah.
Say a number.
Right.
Much less say the problems.
Right.
Kind of where we're at.
Oh, sure.
And clearly state that we've already dropped $2 million. Clearly state that we've already dropped over the last four years, dropped $2 million out of the budget, and nobody felt any pain because of it. We managed to make that work. So making that educational piece, that's a big part. Because as you said, we've done this before, but it's been 10 years or eight years, and we've made it work. So we have to, and, and the good part is, we don't need more space. We, we can, we'll sell off hunks of space if we need to, we don't need more. So that makes it more of a, hopefully a little more attractive.
One of the things that Lisa and Elise, that you don't know, is, is we are going to be a balanced budget next year, because we have made tremendous cuts. And a lot of those are to repairing our buildings.
Okay.
So that's something that we can't continue to put off, or we won't have a roof over our heads. So that's the only reason that we're balanced for next year.
Well, and, and I think we all, I asked about the debt, I mean, we all know, it's an, it's an 11-year sprint to get to the end of that. Then all of a sudden, the rules change. Then we can get things leveled off, but we're paying for the decisions of our predecessors, and that's where we're at.
So that's a good point. You could, if you knew that you had 10, 10 years or 11 years, you could do two five-year non-recurring to line it up with the, the, you know, the final year that your debt goes off. So we'll run those scenarios and look at those scenarios. Because then, you know, 10 years from now, you can set yourself up for whatever it might be. Dropping taxes, or, you know, a, a new revenue cap referendum, or a maintenance roof referendum, or who knows? But it's good to line those up. In fact, we should really make sure we hone in on that, that it lines up with your debt. I will summarize the historical data for you. I have it here, but it's, it's not in good format, so I'll summarize it and I'll send it over to you, you can get it out to the board, so you know when you went, what the results were, what you went for. And I'll just send the, well, I could send all, the recurring, non-recurring, and debt, we have it all in a database, so.
I have a quick question. So if we did something like the example of the $600,000 for three years in a, a non-recurring for 1.8, is that something then that is, is that debt taken care of within that fiscal year? Or is this something, how long is that, are we collecting that?
It's not debt.
That year.
You're not taking on debt.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
You're taking it now, you're asking for an increase.
We're taking it in property taxes.
Yeah, we're taking it in property taxes, and there's no, we're not kicking the debt can down the road anymore. We're just taking it now, and that's the upside to the sunset, is they know, okay, in three years, this is coming off. So if it adds, if it adds 60, 60 cents to their mill rate, it's $11.50 for the next three years of, so it's a base of whatever, plus 60 more cents, and then that 60 cents falls off afterwards. That's where, I mean.
You'd have to go back. Be able to let it fall. Anything else?
What's our next step, Lisa?
I think we continue to fine tune the model. I think we get the August estimated equalized valuation in there, we run some scenarios, we get comfortable with the model, and start thinking, maybe putting a little timeline together about when the board can review next. I would think that we probably want to wait until either September, October, when you have a third Friday count. And then at that point, we can come back with scenarios. So if we do a three-year, if we do a five-year, if we do a step recurring, whatever we decide, you know, we'll run scenarios internally, and then we'll give you some options, either September or October.
Are you working on any other districts?
I'm working on 13 facility referendums for the fall. I think it's 13. And many of them have the operational revenue cap referendum to go along with. Some are for, to operate the facility, and others are for, to fund a deficit, but yeah.
They're separate, they're gonna be separate questions.
They have to be.
They have to be.
Yeah. Yep. One is levying an additional tax, as we talked about, and the other one is paying, paying for debt that you borrow for a facility. But yeah, there's a lot out there that are going, and we've had, like I said, great success. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
So free to stick around.
All right. Yeah, it only gets more exciting.
Riveting stuff.
Yeah. Committee reports. Speaking of riveting, C and P, please.
Okay. We met this past week and talked considerably about National Honor Society. Kathy and Tori obviously submitted their budget, and things are moving forward. They gave us a timeline of things that are happening this summer, different things that they're gonna be working on, which is good. But then we, again, we talked a lot about the National Honor Society program and the policy that we are going to be working on in the near future and putting into place as soon as possible. I had asked for some numbers, some budget numbers for the past, as far back as she could, and Sharon did a good job giving me some numbers, showing us how much we've spent on curriculum in the recent past years, and then prior to that, which wasn't very much at all. And, you know, you can look at that two different ways. We can look at that as a contributing factor to our, our better test scores, the fact that we, you know, updated our curriculum, finally after quite a few years of not doing it. And then it's also, you know, another budgetary item that, you know, do we want to, do we have to keep purchasing to try to keep up our grades and our test scores? Or can we take a little break, use what we have? You know, some, a lot of it is digital now, some of it is not. You know, just different things that I want to take a look at, to kind of help with our, our budget situation. And that was about it.
Thank you. B and G. Do I take this one?
Okay, we met this evening, and mainly discussed our safety grant, as far as school safety. Everything has been submitted, and haven't, obviously, heard if we were granted anything or everything that we looked for. They, I guess they have started to, to disperse that money to some districts, so it, who knows when we might get word on that. Sharon discussed a little bit about, hopefully in the near future, getting quotes on the building insurance, and so we look forward to that. And then there's a potential, got wind, there's a potential reimbursement on some supplies or whatnot from the Eagle Fire from last year. But Dr. Bloom also mentioned that, of course, we could be years as far as actual determination on, on anything, but we might get something back on supplies.
Did they start the floor in Eagle yet? Or when did they start?
They will be doing that July 15th.
Finance.
Okay. We, we also met earlier this evening on that. We had a report from the tech department. They had went around and met with, essentially, classroom by classroom with the teacher within that classroom, and what kind of laid out a game plan and outlook as to what they would like to see and what, what the tech department can do for them, and making sure that everyone's on the same page as we go into next year. So also, the, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative will be fully in place, close to the first day of school as they can. I guess there is a back order on some of those Chromebooks, so hopefully everything can get here and get going. So very, very neat, very exciting to, to say that, in the end, again, starting, I guess, at third grade, I believe, all the way up through seniors should have their own Chromebook, whether that be stay in the classroom for the younger kids, or, you know, starting in sixth grade through 12 to take them home. I think that's it.
And PR.
We met earlier tonight, Stephanie was not available, so she supplied us with some information. The June newsletter is complete and will be mailed out this week. The calendar, she is compiling dates and artwork. At this time, so far, she has received $3,500 in sponsorships, and still has about a week to go before the rest of the rate card should be in. That should be enough to cover at least the black and white version of the calendar, so we are going to discuss whether or not we could possibly do a color printing next year. Excuse me. The Jim Demler Nature Trail dedication was a huge success, a great turnout, and Mr. Demler was really pleased with all that he saw there, and they will continue with maintenance projects on the trail through the fall. The brochures that we had done for the district a few years ago, they are starting to run low on those, but due to the other things we do with the newsletter and calendar and such, we are considering not redoing those brochures at this time and use those finances elsewhere. That was really about it for us tonight.
Thank you very much. Yep.
I'm sorry, one other thing. We did have responses from families that choiced out, about a 40% response rate, and there are some interesting notes on there. Nothing really new to be heard in comments from the parents. Some of the things personally, I think, have been addressed over the years and are maybe a little bit old comments, but definitely something we're looking at, and we'll use that information moving forward.
40% is a pretty good response rate for anything. If you get more than 10%, it's a win, so. Good. All right, administrative report. Sharon, anything cooking tonight? Nope? All right. The consent agenda is handled as a singular motion and vote. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
There we go. Questions, comments? Thank you to the Valentines and to Lakeland Coach Lines for your generous donations. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item A, consider approval of the Palmyra Eagle Coral Boosters as a recognized district support organization for the 1819 school year.
Move to approve of the Palmyra Eagle Coral Boosters as a recognized district support organization for the 1819 school year.
Second.
With the form that was filled out, given the last agenda item, was Mr. RP involved? It was, he wasn't in any of the form? It's all good? Okay. Well, if he is, we'll just have to update the form.
Yeah, if he's a part of it, now that he resigned.
Right, yeah.
It's likely that he might have been listed as the staff advisor or the faculty advisor.
Yeah, and that's fine, just so it gets updated for the records, that's fine. It's not like, I mean, it'll all still continue, so that's good. Questions, comments? All those in favor of the Palmyra Eagle Coral Boosters as recognized district support organization for the 1819 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item B, consider approval of the Chromebook lease with Technology Resource Advisors, KS State Bank for $260,352.
Move to approve of the Chromebook lease with Technology Resource Advisors, KS State Bank for the $260,352.
Second.
Sharon, I had sent you an email. Can you just explain kind of what this one is, so that we're all on the same page with it?
Correct. That's the total lease for all 687 Chromebooks. What Ryan did was create this lease to be over four years. Since all of our computers, or nearly all of our computers are out of their expected lifetime right now, we are starting brand new with this four-year lease. It's $69,000 a year, so fits very well in the budget, and then they're paid for.
Ryan did mention too, that they came in under budget, with their budget, you know, so there was some, yeah, well, with their overall budget, you said that they, you know, we were.
Yes, that's correct. They had a $360,000 budget for the past several years, and he is well under $300,000 as of right now for this year. And so I have set him at $300,000 for next year, which actually was already in your numbers that you have seen.
Any other questions about this one, comments? Is this a bid that goes around, I mean, I assume there's multiple companies, Ryan's too good to have not done that, so.
That's correct. He went to several companies. And it was also very important to us that we had a $1 buyout at the end. The tablets that were leased long ago were not that situation, and we ended up buying out of them for well over $8,000, for 130 tablets. And so we wanted to make sure that this lease was gonna go perfect, and, and so far, everything I've read is going to be. And, and so far, everything I've read is going to be great.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor of the Chromebook lease with Technology Resource Advisors, KS State Bank for $260,352, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item C, consider approval of the 18, uh, sorry, 1718 seclusion restraint annual report.
Move to approve, uh, the 201718 seclusion restraint annual report.
Steve, any comments on this one?
This is a required annual report now for the last five or six years. Amanda Jones and staff collaborated to put together that report, um, for you. It does require board approval, board awareness of the number of instances of seclusion and restraint for either regular and/or, um, special education students. And that's the document that you had to review tonight.
Anyone with questions or comments about this one? All those, good, okay. All those in favor of approving the 1718 seclusion restraint annual report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Last action item is number, is letter D, consider approval of WIAA membership for the 1819 school year.
Move to approve WIAA membership for the 1819 school year.
And I see on the form, this is a grand cost of zero now, correct?
This, I believe, is the third or fourth year that there have been no charges to member school districts by the WIAA. It's simply a matter of, uh, their request that you do take action on wishing to continue membership with them.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval of the WIAA membership for the 1819 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we are on to the district administrator's report, please.
Thank you. We could go Wednesday was a very interesting last full day of the school year that did not take place. I just wanted to thank everybody for their support and understanding for the decision that was made, uh, to cancel school on Wednesday. As I told the staff, when we were able to reconvene on Thursday, which was a, a half a day, it, it brought closure to the end of the school year and I thought that was very important. Teachers want to say goodbye to their students. Students want to say goodbye to their teacher. Students want to say goodbye to one another, so it was really important that we'd be able to do that. And obviously the way the scenario played itself out, we were permitted to do that. So I was very appreciative, um, of that. Retrospectively, I do think it was the proper decision to be made, um, not knowing what the situation, um, could have become during the course of that day and even the uncertainty from Tuesday night into, um, Wednesday morning. So thank you for your support. We did have a number of, uh, end of the year activities, um, one of which is, uh, a huge activity is sixth grade transition. As students from both Eagle Elementary and Palmyra Elementary come to the middle school. Staff members have put together a, a day-long program now where students come over. They have a shadow buddy that's either a current seventh or eighth grader. They, they are able to meet the staff, um, if they haven't already, uh, done so. As small as we are, it is surprising to find out that there are some students who have not been in this building, um, for whatever reason. And they tend to run in, um, one of two different camps. Either they've been here forever because they have an older sibling who has been in the middle school, high school, or they don't and they're the first to come through. So it's a, it's a neat opportunity, um, as, as kids reflect upon their experience. And we had, um, a number of, uh, eighth graders come and talk to the kids when, when, um, we had the parent night. It was, there is a little bit of trepidation coming together from two different schools, but in a few days, if not a few hours, that goes away. And you're no longer an Eagle kid or a Palmyra kid, you're a Palmyra Eagle middle school kid. Um, and that's refreshing, uh, refreshing to see. You saw correspondence, most of you, for spring coaches and student athletes. So thank you to all of our coaches, um, and our students for their participation this year. One special note, um, for Coach Tom Davy, he recorded his 400th varsity career baseball victory, uh, the middle of May. We also had, and I provided you a list of, um, student athlete recipients for their respective spring sports. First team, second team, honorable mention in the Trailways Conference. In the epitome of student athlete, we also had two, uh, groups, girls' basketball and varsity golf that also, uh, did very well academically, um, as well in their respective, uh, division.
I think since your report too, we've gotten more on the golfers. Not only did they get individual, but they also took second in the state.
In the state, exactly.
So they'll all get silver medals.
Yeah, which is really good. And, and there's been a history there, I think, of golf in particular doing quite well academically as well as, uh, performance, uh, as a golf team, uh, as a team and individuals. Special kudos to Tiffany Lindblum and Sharon Cox there, our, um, support staff members at Palmyra Elementary, who on occasion and by virtue of their training, performed the Heimlich maneuver on a student in the cafeteria, um, who was choking. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I know that Mr. Greenquist did include that note in, um, his report to you, but wanted to publicly thank the two of them for their, um, appropriate response, um, to a situation that obviously could have been a lot worse than what it was. So thanks to the two of them. Technology Committee was very active this year. You see who the participants were. That supported the work that Tina and Ryan have done in the district this year. Eighth graders were promoted, um, June the 5th. High school graduation, uh, was, uh, two days prior to that. A general blanket thank you to all of our staff members for, um, a very successful, um, school year. We did have an end of the year, um, recognition of service award recipients. We start at, at year five and then five-year increments moving forward. And we also recognize the retirees, um, who have decided to, uh, either leave the teaching profession, leave us here and move on to other things. And so we're very appreciative of the work that they have done. And I did include a list of both service award recipients as well as retirees in my notes to you. Finally, just a note, we're monitoring enrollment at PES, in particular at a couple of different grade levels. Good news is we've had some, some move-ins. Bad news is they've been at the same grade level. So numbers are starting to inch up a little bit and there are concerns, um, for both third and fifth grade moving forward next year. So six will be two, two teachers already. But it's third and fifth that are experiencing some growth. Correct. I believe that's it for me.
All right. And before you finish, I, I guess I would like to go back to last week and say, I thought all your emails were, were excellent. The communication, you were ahead of it and that's where we, uh, since, since you've been here, that's where we've wanted to be is ahead of these situations. We weren't facing pitchforks and fires. We were telling them how things were going to go. And thank you for, for doing such a nice job with, so I appreciate that. Announcements and board comments. Anybody selling raffle tickets or fundraisers this time around?
Um, I did want to say that, uh, you each have a packet, um, from the CISA II meeting that I went to. It's very interesting, um, regarding, you know, unfortunate events of the, of the world and things that we have to be prepared for. And a couple interesting comments, statistics that he gave us. I forget his name. He was from, um, Homeland Security. Anyway. He did a very good job and there's a lot of good, you know, it, it's a lot to read, but, and I have not read it all, but there's a lot of good stuff in there. But a couple of good things he said, um, is it's something that we just continually have to practice. Like we still do fire drills, but there hasn't been a child burned in a school since 1950. But we still do fire drills. And so this, um, active shooter practice stuff is something that's just a way of life right now and something that we're going to have to continue to do. We had 160 active shooters this past year. And, uh, in 2014, 2015, there were 40. So you can see that that number is just drastically continuing to increase. We talked about earlier, uh, that we applied for some grants. One other statistic that he said was that, um, a child or individual, I don't know if he said child or individual, but individual has never been killed behind a locked door. So, um, there's been shooting through windows, but a child has never been killed through, behind a locked door. And I think that that was a key thing that we've done. We've locked, you know, we've added the locks on a lot of our doors and they have the magnet thing right now, but it can easily be pulled away. But I thought that was intriguing. And then that a lot of things, some of the things that the, the grants, other schools are asking for in, in the grants is, like a protective coating on the, on the glass, just to make it a little more, uh, bulletproof type, which I don't think it can be completely bulletproof. But, um, you know, again, he said pay attention to social media and anger doesn't just happen overnight. There's significant signs and different things that you can, that you can look for. And, um, I think, you know, all of us are parents of, of students and we have friends, our kids have friends. And it's just something that we need to monitor, you know, um, on a regular basis. But very interesting stuff. I, I just, I asked, thank you to Dr. Bloom for getting everybody a, a copy of the packet because I thought it was, I thought it was interesting. Food wasn't that great, but.
I was going to ask. I know that was always the highlight of the event. Anyone else? Upcoming meetings, Building and Grounds, 5:30 Tuesday, July 10th. We have finance committee on July 10th at 6:00, public relations at 6:30. Next regular board meeting Tuesday, July 10th at 7 o'clock. And curriculum policy will be at Thursday, July 12th at 5 o'clock. With that, we have worked our way through and I would now hear a motion to adjourn this evening, please.
Motion to adjourn this evening.
Second? All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day. School starts again in 85 days.